I'd like to welcome everyone here. Please turn your cellphones off, or at least vibrate. And all hats, I don't see any hats. Okay? And with that, we'll go to public hearings. First public hearing is for bylaw 2016-34. Colton?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll try to go through these. These are the repealing bylaws, so I'll try to go through them pretty quickly.
Okay. Has all the proper notifications been done?
Yes, Mr. Chair, it has.
Has all... Has any member of the public have any concern with any member of council listening to this?
Mr. Chairman, you've got to have the motion to go in and out of public hearings?
I just remembered that. Any member of the public have any problem? Not seeing any. I'd like to move that process for Wheatland County Council meeting as pertains to scheduled public hearings will be as follows. Public hearing, first reading if required. Consideration for further readings of bylaw for those public hearings that have been closed. Further moved that the above process will take place with the absence of resolutions to go into and out of council before and after each public hearing. Any questions? All in favor? With that, I'll open the public hearing for bylaw 2016-34. Have all proper notifications been done?
Yes, Mr. Chair, they have.
Okay, carry on.
Thank you. This is file 2016-46, and as noted, 2016, bylaw 2016-34. The owner of the land is Danny Thiessen, and the applicant for this is Wheatland County. So the legal description is a portion of the northwest 28, 22, 25 west of the fourth in Division III. The plan area is 18.23 acres. So the purpose of this application is to repeal bylaw 2012-08, otherwise known as the Thiessen Area Structure Plan. So it's located adjacent to Range Road 263 and approximately six kilometers northeast to the hamlet of Carsland. So a bit of background information, the purpose of the Thiessen Area Structure Plan was to comply with previous Wheatland County policy, which required an ASP be submitted if a proposed subdivision would result in more than three lots on a quarter section. As the applicant at the time proposed a four-lot subdivision, which exceeded the three lots, an ASP was adopted to support the subdivision application. The subdivision related to this ASP has since been approved, and all the lots have been registered. Therefore, staff are deeming the ASP to be obsolete or spent, as per the MGA. So we're of the opinion that bylaw 2012-08 should be repealed. Terms of our policy analysis, the province is requiring that all statutory planning documents be in alignment with the South Saskatchewan Regional Plan by September 1st, 2019. So the county has just under three years now to review all of our regulatory instruments, such as the MDP, the land use bylaw, and all area structure plans, and file a statutory declaration with the provincial land use secretariat. As the Thiessen ASP is a statutory document, we'd either have to update it to align it with the SSRP, or we could choose to repeal it. Given that it's all built out, we're proposing to have it repealed. It also aligns with the MDP of the county. So we didn't circulate it externally, but we did circulate it internally, and there was no concerns with the repeal. It was also circulated to all landowners within a half-mile of the subject lands, and no letters were received in either support or objection at the time that the report was prepared. So I'm just going to go down... Well, I'll just do the options here. So you have option number one, which is to repeal bylaw 2012-08, and then motion one and two to give second and third reading for this bylaw, which would repeal the ASP's bylaw. Or option two, you could refuse to repeal bylaw 2012-08. Staffs are recommending option one, which is to repeal bylaw 2012-08 for the following reasons: the proposed repeal is authorized under the MGA, and the Thiessen ASP has been deemed obsolete or spent. I'll just show the location here. There's an area plan, I'll just zoom out a bit. Area plan of the proposed repeal. And then this is from the original area structure plan. Everybody that was circulated. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any questions from council? Alice?
So we discussed a little bit about area structure plans this morning on whether or not we should look at canceling or repealing these due to the fact of the Calgary Growth Management Board could be coming out. That's one of my issues. The second one is, what if Mr. Thiessen wants to add two more parcels or four more parcels, which has happened in the, you know, before, right? So what's stopping him from doing that? If you have an area structure plan here, that could be amended to, you know, look after two or four or whatever might happen. But if you take it away, so what stops him from bringing in more development?
Through the chair. This area structure plan was just for the four lots without, I believe, a future phasing plan in existence to allow for additional lots. So he would have to either apply to amend this area structure plan and update it, which it'd almost be as much work as doing a new area structure plan, pretty much. So that's... And then the fact that the MDP only allows up to five lots on a quarter section automatically stops him. It is an interesting question for those other ASPs that may be in the county that do have future phasing of additional lots, whether because they were put in prior to the MDP mandating the five lots, how that would work, but that would be decided on that specific applications basis. As for this one, because it was just for these four lots, staff has no concerns, and we've consulted with the previous applicant of this area structure plan, and they had no concerns as well with the repeal of this ASP.
Okay. Any other questions? Any member of the public have any questions or concerns pertaining to this area structure Counsel have any questions? Brenda?
So I guess my concern is how... And I'm... I guess for those in the audience that didn't know, but we have received information that our county, a certain area from west Wheatland, is now in this, supposedly in the Growth Management Board for the city of Calgary. So... Or for the Growth Management Board around Calgary. So I guess I'm expressing the same concern that I did this morning, as to how this affects all our statutory documents. And I'm not sure at this time whether we should move forward or recess until we get more information on what the requirement's for, other than what we have. And do you know anything, any different, as to how this is going to affect our planning from Highway West over to our boundary? Highway 21 West?
Through the chair. I know as much as you do in terms of what was provided to me in regards to the boundary, and I'm unclear as to the exact boundary as well, given that Highway 21 ends at Highway 1, so I can't comment, and I have no idea, and can't even begin to speculate on how the Growth Management Board process may impact planning at the county right now.
At this time, yeah, we are mandated in as part of the Growth Management Board, but the discussions and the issues around that won't be known for two or three years yet, because they have to come up with a plan, they have to put that all forward. So to me, the landowner that originally put this forward has no issue with it. Colton has said that to change the ASP from what it is for those four lots would be just as expensive for owners as coming in with a new one. So there's no advantage to keeping it on the books, and it doesn't hinder the applicant or the landowners involved from following through with any of the development they've got. So I think we move forward as business as usual until we have the other stuff in place to deal with it. Because we can speculate all we want, but we're not... We can't... We can't make decisions on speculation right now.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? Brenda?
I see that on the ASP, there is a cul-de-sac on there and a road going in. All that has been completed and finished and in place before we remove the area structure plan.
Through the chair. Even if it wasn't completed, we registered development agreement on the title of all of the lots. So the repealing of the ASP, even if securities haven't been refunded for any infrastructure, it's not related to the ASP in that we have it all registered on title.
Okay. Any other questions? No other questions? Any comments from the public? Not seeing any, I will close the public hearing for bylaw 2016-34, and we are now back in council.
I request a recorded vote, please.
We haven't got a motion yet. Don?
I just got one short comment. Last month, they've been doing intensive proposal. And yes.
You reported that at the public hearing. You should have made that known at the public hearing. They're moving 2016-34 for second reading. Now you can ask for a recorded vote, Alice.
Okay. I request a recorded vote on this 2016-34.
Any questions? All in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Councillors Booth and Knight voted in opposition. The other councillors voted in favor. Second reading's passed.
I'll move third reading.
Ben has moved third reading. Any questions or concerns? Alice asks for a recorded vote. Any questions or concerns? All in favor? Opposed? Motion's carried. Councillors Knight and Booth were opposed, the rest were in favor. And we'll open the public hearing for bylaw 2016-35. Have all proper notifications been done?
Yes, Mr. Chair, they have.
Is there any member of the public have any concerns of any councillor listening to this public hearing? Not seeing any, please continue.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this is file PL 2016-47, bylaw 2016-35. There's multiple landowners, the applicant's Wheatland County. The legal description is a portion of the northwest 3, 25, 26 west of the fourth, and the plan area is 160 acres. So the purpose of this application is once again to repeal bylaw 2012-55, otherwise referred to as the Parkland Area Structure Plan. So it's adjacent to Range Road 263 and approximately 1.3 miles southeast of the hamlet of La Alta. So once again, this was to align... Previously, policy at the county was you had to do an area structure plan if you were going over three lots per quarter section. So this area structure plan was done as they were exceeding the three lots with the two-lot subdivision that was related to this ASP. The policy analysis is the same as the previous one, in that we have to align all statutory documents with the SSRP by September 2019. And it aligns with our MDP authority as well. In terms of alignment with the Parkland Area Structure Plan, the purpose was to facilitate a two-lot subdivision. As the subdivision's been approved and the lots have been registered, we're contending that it no longer serves a statutory purpose. Circulated internally with no comments. It was also circulated to all adjacent landowners within a half-mile, and no letters were received in other support or objection. So the council has two options for consideration. Option one, to repeal the Parkland Area Structure Plan and give second and third reading to the repeal bylaw. Or option two is to refuse to repeal the Parkland Area Structure Plan and rescind this bylaw. We are recommending option one, which is to repeal it, as that's authorized under the Municipal Government Act, and it's been deemed obsolete or spent. So I'll just go down to the mapping here. The location plan, so you've got Lakesimer Field and La Alta up here. The area plan dashed red lines of the two lots that were subdivided. And then this is the area plan from the original ASP document, and our landowner circulation map. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any questions from any councillors? Any comments from the public? Any comments from council? Brenda?
So by removing this, then it allows this particular... As long as these two lots were in as an individual, as they were in the area structure plan, these particular lots can now be then re-subdivided and re-subdivided again to meet growth management quotas, if we need be. So that's the reason that I still don't feel that we should be canceling these, because if we need to meet some other requirement, then we could have intense lot developments out in the middle of nowhere. So I'm not in favor of it.
Any other comments? Is there any answer to that, Colton?
Through the chair. It'd be me speculating on what the Growth Management Boards are going to entail, and I have no say as to what will happen with those, so I can't comment.
Any other comments? With that, I'll close the public hearing for bylaw 2016-35, and we're now back in Counsel's wishes?
I'll move second reading.
Ben has moved second reading. Any questions?
Recorded vote.
Recorded vote has been asked for by councillor Knight... Or councillor Booth, sorry. Any questions? All in favor? All in favor? Sorry, I need a better... Opposed? Motion's carried. Councillor Harwood, Booth, and Knight voted in opposition. The other councillors voted in favor. Counsel wished to do third reading? I'll move third reading then. Any questions or concerns? Councillor Booth asked for a recorded vote. Any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Is carried. Councillor Harwood, Knight, and Booth voted in opposition. The rest voted in favor. And with that, I'll open the public hearing for bylaw 2016-36. Has all the proper notifications been done?
Yes, Mr. Chair, they have.
Does any member of the public have any concerns of any councillor listening to these public hearing? Not seeing any, please continue, Colton.
Thank you. So this is file PL 2016-48. There are multiple landowners, once again, the applicant's Wheatland County. So there's three legal descriptions: the southeast 31, 24, 25; the northeast 30, 24, 25; and the northwest 29, 24, 25, all in Division 5. The plan area is roughly 480 acres, and the purpose is to repeal bylaw 2012-04, otherwise known as the Hervey Area Structure Plan. The location, it's adjacent to Range Road 255, or approximately 3.7 kilometers northwest to Strathmore. The background is the same again, in that previous policy was if there was over three lots on a quarter, you had to apply for an area structure plan. This area structure plan was, three landowners, I believe, well, three different quarter sections, they came together and did the ASP. So there was a 10-lot subdivision, but I believe three or four lots on each of the quarters. All of those subdivisions have since been approved, and lots have been registered. Therefore, we're deeming the ASP to be obsolete or spent, as per the MGA. So we're of the opinion that bylaw 2012-04 should be repealed. Once again, it's to bring it into alignment with the SSRP. Aligned with the MDP and the MGA as well. This was circulated internally, not externally. There was no concerns internally. It was also circulated to all landowners within a half-mile of the subject lands. There's no letters in support or objection at the time that this report was prepared. So the council has two options for consideration. Option one, which is to repeal bylaw 2012-04 and grant second and third reading. Or option two, refuse to repeal 2012-04 and then rescind this repealing bylaw 2016-36. We're recommending option one, which is to repeal bylaw 2012-04, because it's authorized under the Municipal Government Act, and the area structure plan has been deemed obsolete or spent. Let's go through the maps here quickly. This is the location plan. Area structure plan boundaries. And then this was the map from the original ASP. This is the landowner circulation map of everyone that was circulated. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any questions? Alice?
Again, I'd like to put my objection of canceling the ASP. This is an area that is south of there and around there that has been broken up in a number of small acreages. And if the county was looking at expanding an area for growth, that's one of the areas that could be certainly expanded on. And I'm against canceling this area structure plan for... Because it is in the growth area that Calgary's mandating, and for that reason, I'd like to see it stay.
Thank you. Colton, you have an answer?
I'm going to sound like a broken record here. I apologize. I just have to... Yeah, sorry. I have to just say, once again, we can't really speculate on what the Growth Management Board may entail, so I can't... We can't base policy off what we're uncertain of in the future. Thank you.
Okay. I'll ask a little bit different question. If this area structure plan is in place right now, and you mentioned there was, what, 10 subdivisions in this area? And if somebody come ahead with another 10 subdivisions for the same area, would this area structure plan be of any value to adding on to some more subdivisions?
Through the chair. All of these... None of the... There can be no more development on any of these three-quarter sections, because they're at their max five lots. If there was to be an application for one more, they'd have to provide piped water and wastewater services. So if they were... So in order to do that, it's financially feasible, you need a large master plant community, so you'd need a whole new area structure plan anyways. This would not suffice for any future development on these three-quarters.
So this... What you're telling me, this present area structure plan is of very little use for future development?
Through the chair, that's correct.
Okay. Alice?
I disagree. This is in the growth management area, and if that's the case, pipe water can come from Strathmore. And that's under the policy of the Growth Management Board, that once you're in that area, pipe water would come from the existing water system in Strathmore. So I'm... I don't agree with what Colton said. I think this is actually a very important area to be kept open. It is a statutory document, and it's in place. So we don't know for sure what's happening in the growth management policies. But if we cancel our statutory documents, then the Growth Management Board, which the old one used to do, wouldn't allow you to now develop in that area. So that's what I am concerned about, that we could be stopping our growth if we want to go there.
Okay. Any other questions? Brenda?
Just a question through the chair. So I remember being part of the public hearings for this particular statutory document. And at the time, we had some extremely upset people, that they were going to be neighbors to 4, 6, 8, 10. And by putting this area structure plan in place for these three-quarters, it was their assurance that that's all they would have. So by removing this statutory plan, it now opens it up for a whole new can of worms and a whole new document, and now the development can double and triple if it need be, provided service or water. So I guess my question is, if we're going to do an area structure plan, and we're going to bring people in for the public hearings of them, and this is what they are, then the county decides three years down the road that it's done and it's over with, and away we go again. What would be the purpose of having an area structure plan? Because the people that came in here and talked about who their neighbors were going to be, knew that that was all they were going to have in this area. So even though you might have put out notice or whatever, if the county just decides that one day we're just going to scratch the area structure plan, then what was the point of all the planning and the hearing and all the other stuff that went prior to this? Because for that, the people wasted their money, because in three years, we're back deleting the plan. So just a thought.
Through the chair. It is unusual that previously area structure plans were done for three, four-lot subdivisions. Typically, they're done for much larger developments, where you have phasing, and it goes on. With this type of area structure plan, an MDP is a much more powerful document than an area structure plan. Our MDP has that five-lot rule. I know there's speculation that things may change with the Growth Management Boards. I can't comment on that. But with our MDP having that five-lot rule as it stands right now, unless they're providing pipe water and wastewater and doing a comprehensive area structure plan, the neighbors that may be objecting to more neighbors here have no concerns at the current time with our MDP in place.
Okay. Any other questions? Ben?
Just a comment. The ASP that was put in place did suffice what it was put in place for. Those developments are in place. It has no other use there, and as Colton has said, anything else in that area would need a master plan that was way over and above what this area structure plan covers. So having this removed, to me, makes more sense. It also brings this land back into agriculture, where it should have been left originally.
Okay. Any other questions? Any member of the public have any questions or concerns pertaining to this bylaw? Please use the mic and state your name.
I guess the only comment I have...
Name, please. Name.
Oh, Eileen Walker, sorry. North of Nightingale. The concern I have over the years, and it's coming true, is our agricultural land is disappearing. Excellent agricultural land by La Alta, et cetera, et cetera. And all... Everybody wants to do is subdivide, which just means bigger and bigger and bigger, and less agricultural land. Someday, maybe some of us will see the results of this sort of stuff.
Thank you. And the other comments? Questions? Counsel? Comments? Not seeing any, I'll close the public hearing for bylaw 2016-36. I lost it. Yes, 2016-36. And we're now back in council. Counsel's wishes?
I'll move second reading.
Ben has moved second reading. Any questions? Recorded vote's been asked for by councillor Booth. All in favor? Opposed? Carried. Councillor Harwood, Knight, and Booth voted in opposition. Don has moved third reading. Any questions? Councillor Booth asked for a recorded vote. All in favor? Opposed? Carried. Councillor Harwood, Knight, and Booth voted in opposition. The rest voted in favor. With that, I'll open the public hearing for bylaw 2016-40. Have all the proper notifications been done?
Yes, Mr. Chair, they have.
Any member of the public have any concerns or questions of any councillor listening to this public hearing? I don't see any, so please continue.
So file number LU 2016-52, and bylaw 2016-40. The owner is Heather Nail, and the applicant is Russell and Wendy Nail. Legal description, in your package, it states it as 29. It should read northeast 13, 26, 19 west of the 4, and it's in Division Number 7. Titled area is 160 acres, or 64.7 hectares. The existing land use is agricultural general district, and the proposed land use district is agricultural small holding district. Location is adjacent to Range Road 190 and Township Road 263, approximately 11 kilometers southeast of Dallin. So background information, the intent of this application is to redesignate 4.04 hectares, or 10 acres, to agricultural small holding district to accommodate a proposed one-lot subdivision out of the quarter section. For policy analysis, because there is no area structure plan, it's been analyzed through the municipal development plan and land use bylaw. So through the municipal development plan, the proposed boundary extends past the residential dwelling to the west to accommodate the septic field and water well used by the existing dwelling, and to the north, where it meets Township Road 263. This extra land adds an additional five acres to the property. As such, the extra land included in the proposed boundary extends the already existing footprint of the dwelling, and does not comply with several sections of the MDP for agricultural land production and residential development. land production and residential development. The applicant stated, "The intent of the redesignation is to subdivide the house and yard from the titled parcel so they can own the land the house is currently on. There is no business plan as per the land use bylaw for agricultural small holding. As such, there is no guarantee to the county that it will be used for agricultural business In section 3.1.1 and section 3.1.2 of the MDP, it outlines the agricultural policies and objectives for the county to protect agricultural lands from fragmentation. The objectives 3.1.1.2 and 3.1.1.3 include protecting existing agricultural lands and minimize the fragmentation of and effects on agricultural lands. The proposed redesignation does not minimize fragmentation, as the extended boundary of approximately five acres surrounding the dwelling has not been guaranteed to be used for agricultural purposes through a business plan for the remaining land, and therefore takes the risk of removing agricultural land out of production. Section 3.6.1.11 in the residential development objective states, "Ensure that new residential subdivisions are designed to reduce their overall footprint on the land, therefore minimizing the use of land." The proposed boundary extends far past this developed area and unnecessarily extends the footprint of the property going against this. The proposed subdivision boundary also lays the groundwork for future subdivision. The extra land included in the boundary to the north provides, sorry, gives the applicant potential to split the 10-acre parcel into two five-acre parcels. This would further go against agricultural and residential development policies in the county's MDP. As such, staff have recommended an option to consider for council. If they do decide to approve this application, it is to reduce the boundary to five acres as shown in the image here to help regulate future land subdivision on the quarter section. Through the land use bylaw, the purpose of the agricultural small holdings is to provide residents with an option to pursue agricultural business pursuits that do not require extensive land areas. The applicant does not have a business plan for the redesignation application, is not proposing any new uses or guarantees for the land to be used for agricultural purposes. In section 8.4.8.1 of the land use bylaw requires a business plan to be submitted in support of the application. Therefore, the application does not meet the purpose of the agricultural small holdings district. The existing dwelling is consistent with the permitted uses allowed for the agricultural small holdings, and all setback requirements could be met based on the proposed plan. For circulation, external agencies, Alberta Health Services had their standard for comments. Rosebud Gas Co-op had no concerns. Tallas had no concerns, and Western Irrigation had no concerns. Internal departments, Development Services just wants to ensure that all structures meet the setback requirements for the new district. For circulation to landowners, it was circulated within a half mile of the subject lands, and no letters were received in support or objection to the application at the time the report was prepared. As such, you have three options. Option one is that you give bylaw 2016-40 second reading, and then give it third and final reading. Option two, that application LU 2016-52 be approved as per staff's proposed map option, which was number one, where you reduce it to five acres. There we go. Sorry, I was on it already. And then the second, or sorry, the third option would be to refuse the application. Staff recommendation is that option three, refusal for the following reasons. It does not comply with various agricultural and residential development policies within the municipal development plan. It does not comply with the various rules and regulations of the agricultural small holdings district in the land use bylaw, and it unnecessarily fragments agricultural And that is all. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions? Concerns? Any member of the public have any questions or concerns or comments? Go ahead.
I didn't realize this was up today, but I know there are farmers in the area and do a good job in whether or not there's a business plan. That was an interesting requirement for a bylaw anyway. They are in the farming business in a big way out there. And whatever the need Russ and Heather thought for doing this, I would support it fully. I think that's a good use of their land, and they're quite a ways out east, and to subdivide 10 acres gives a nice size acreage out there. So I'd fully support it.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Brenda?
Through the chair. I guess you decided to maybe move the land down, but looking at this particular picture, there isn't an actual, like, it looks like a hard piece of land to actually have agricultural land on because of the actual waterway that runs through there. And my question would be, on your other, what is the footage from your line up to the road allowance? So you changed it, you wanted it to represent the green line that, like, yours there? So by just making it lengthwise and shortening, what would be the benefit to that piece of land to the top? Because if I know these farmers, A, it doesn't even look like that piece is farmable. It looks like native pasture. I'm not sure whether I'm, whether I'm right or wrong. And secondly, I don't think you could get some equipment in that corner. Does that make sense with the large farmers that we do have? So that's why I'm asking, why are you shortening the piece when I don't think that they actually do farm that corner?
Well, I'll, I'll make some comments to clarify some of that as soon as everybody else says their.
That would be nice, please. It's Ben's area.
Okay. Okay, Ben, you go.
Go back to your first diagram. Yeah, that's good enough. In discussions with Russell, this parcel that Brenda's talking about, you're gonna cut it off here. It's about three acres, four acres up in this area. Right now, in this area here, that's, this is cropland. This is just grass. They have no cattle anymore. He gets, this year, he got three hay bales out of here, and this was a good year. Normally, he gets two. And he figures by taking this out, he might get one hay bale out of this area here. There's a septic field in here, and his water well is in this area here. So to him, having this come in here and leaving this, it would become a wasteland. They might go in there and hay that in the year. They might get a half a bale out of that little piece that's left up in there. So to me, it makes more sense to leave it like that than to cut it up in here, because they can't, this is, this is a deep enough gully in here, and it's a wetland. It's a waterway. They won't be break, they won't be breaking it up, so they can't get through here with big equipment. So it, it doesn't make sense to keep that corner out. And I know they didn't have a business plan in place like they're supposed to, but I know the family, and I know what they're, what they're doing. It's, it's estate planning, and there won't be any other subdivisions out there on, on that piece of property. It's like they said, it's a fourth, one, two, three, fourth, fifth generation farm. They're just cleaning up an estate issue. So I have no issue with the original intent.
Okay. Thanks, Ben. Is there any other questions or comments? Any member of the public have any comments, concerns? One more time for counsel. Not seeing any. I'll close the public hearing for bylaw 2016-40. We're now back in council.
I'll move second reading for the original as it is on the map.
As per application? Okay. Any questions? All in favor? Brenda moved third reading. Any questions or concerns? All in favor? And with that, I'll open the public hearing for bylaw 2016-41. Has all the proper notifications been done?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, they have.
Any member of the public have any concerns of any counselor listening to this public Not seeing any. Please continue.
So this is file number LU 2016-55 and bylaw number 2016-41. Owner is Marjorie Cooper. Applicant is Donald Cooper. Legal description is northwest 132324, west of the four, in division number two. Titled area is three acres. Existing land use district is agricultural general, and the proposed is country residential district. Location, it's adjacent to Range Road 241 and north of Township Road 232, approximately 3.3 kilometers east of the hamlet of Namika. The intent of this application is to re-designate a previously subdivided 1.21 hectare, three-acre parcel from the quarter section to accommodate the conditions of the owner's development permit, DP 2016-90. Through policy analysis, because it is not a part of an area structure plan, it was analyzed through municipal development plan and the land use bylaw. It aligns with the MDP as per the agricultural objectives and policies. Its existing condition as a residential lot with a dwelling and storage shed does not further fragment or remove any farmland from production. It also complies with the MDP policy for natural areas, section 3.2.2, as there are no important natural areas being affected. The minimal land necessary for its existing state also complies with 3.6.1.7, which states to minimize the encroachment of residential development onto agricultural lands. Through the land use bylaw, the existing dwelling is consistent with permitted uses for country residential. It is within the one-to-five acre parcel size, and the setbacks are complying with land use bylaw for country residential. For circulation, Alberta Health Services gave its standard for conditions. Rosebud Gas Co-op had no concerns. Fortis Alberta had no concerns. Tallas and Western Irrigation also had no concerns, and there were no concerns during the internal department review. For circulation to landowners, it was circulated within a half mile of the subject lands, and no letters were received in support or objection for this application at the time it was prepared. Counsel has two options. Option one, to give bylaw 2016-41 second reading, and a motion for 2016-41 to give third and final reading. And option number two, application LU 2016-55 be refused. Recommendation from staff is option one, approval for the following reasons. It is consistent with the MDP policies regarding the preservation of agricultural lands and natural areas, and it is consistent with the country residential district as per the land use bylaw. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any questions from counsel? Rex?
So you say that the CR subdivision is within the setbacks. What happens to the bins in the north? I'm gonna assume that's the north side. Like, do they now require some sort of a variance because they're gonna be too close? Or?
Through the chair. This rezoning is tied, this was tied just to a development permit, correct? This rezoning, yeah. So if this had been a subdivision application, like, they did rezoning, and then they would have to subdivide, we'd make a condition that they'd have to move the bins? Because this is just a rezoning related to that particular lot. We can't control the grain bins on the other parcel with this one. So they don't meet setbacks currently, and they won't meet new setbacks with this zoning. But at this stage, we have no control on that, because we can't put conditions on a rezoning.
Which I'm not trying to do. I'm just, I don't wanna create this parcel, and then somebody be forced to move the bins later. That's...
Through the chair. The parcel's already created. Like, this is a parcel as it is now, so this is just, it's just, it is a three-acre AG parcel. It's just a zoning change to CR. So they, yes, the part, unfortunately, they can't change because the parcel's already there.
Okay. Answer your question. Any other questions? Any questions from the public? Concerns? Okay. Not seeing any. I'll close the public hearing for bylaw 2016-41, and we are now in counsel.
I'll move second reading of bylaw 2016-41.
Okay. Rex has moved. Any questions or concerns? All in favor? Ben has moved third reading. Any questions or concerns? All in favor? Okay. Thank you. Now, I'll open the public hearing for bylaw 2016-01. All the proper notifications been done?
Yes, Mr. Chair, they have.
Is there any member of the public have any concerns of any counselor listening to this public hearing? Not seeing any. Please continue.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'm gonna just go through a presentation addressing the concerns that were brought up at the last public hearing from all of the speakers, just so they have their inquiries or concerns answered by staff. Also, the handout that we're just gonna hand out with the responses written out.
Just so the public knows, this is a reconvened public hearing that was recessed, and Colton's just going to make comments on some of the concerns that were addressed at the last public hearing.
Thank you. So we'll start off with the first speaker, which is Mr. Jerry Kuhn, who would like to see regulation 8.12.1B removed from the draft LUB so that medical marijuana production facilities could be built anywhere in the county. Our draft was proposed to leave the existing regulations in place as the previous bylaw related to medical marijuana production facilities was approved by council in 2014 and is in line with other municipalities that focus this use in a specific area, such as MDA foothills, which actually, you have to do a specific DC for them. Given the politically sensitive nature of this issue, staff felt it wasn't appropriate to revisit the change in this, given it was previously debated, debated in 2014. That said, if council wishes to have this removed from the land use bylaw, that's completely at your discretion. Our draft is currently prepared, has it to remain in the West Highway one based on the fact that this was discussed in depth in 2014. If council's views have changed since then, staff is fine with council making a change in that decision. So this regulation is unchanged from the draft from LUB 2007-56. Second speaker was Mr. Marshman. He had a concern, this is largely a staff-driven document with little input. We did have four open houses. At one of them, nobody actually attended, so a number had quite a few people in attendance. We did two online surveys, eight public notices posted twice. They were in 16 different places all around the county. We did multiple newspapers ad. We actually had an external stakeholders group with surveyors, people that have done development in the past, septic specialists, those type of people in the group that provided things that directly influenced the LUB. Did lots of Facebook and Twitter posts, and I personally spoke to over 200 landowners on the phone in regards to the engagement. We did a direct mail out of the redesignations. We also did a generic mail out with the tax mail, mailer. And we consulted directly with dozens of parties ranging from the WID to solar and wind companies, manufactured home associations, et cetera. So in short, the engagement was really comprehensive and in-depth, with a focus on openness, transparency, and inclusion. If this was largely a staff-driven document, we could have gone fully, like, very deep in regulations with no open houses, no input, but this was really quite a consultative process. Second concern was over that the minimum square footage of buildings that should be exempt from a DP should be increased from 100 square feet to a larger number. This is pretty standard and in line with most municipalities in Alberta. Some are 108 feet, but all are very close to the 100-square-foot determinant. At this size, there may start to be impacts on adjacent properties, and the scope requires the oversight of a DP to ensure these setbacks from property lines, abandoned gas wells, and other buildings. Does a public safety, accountability, and appearance consideration to this minimum? Most structures over 100 square feet also require a building permit as per the Safety Codes Act, so this is just aligning with that as well, of course, unless it's a farm building. This also allows us to track information as whether building permits are required for applicants, helping people out. The draft LUB and the majority of LUBs in this province designate, a certain percentage of a lot can be covered in the interest of fire protection, the look and feel of the county, neighbor impacts, et cetera. So if you don't require DP... So you could have a lot that's fully covered in buildings and the neighbor might not like that, or it might not fit in with that area. This regulation is unchanged from the current LUB, so nothing new is being proposed in this. The concern regarding the number of RVs stored on the property. So this issue was actually brought up through the consultation process with registered business owners who own RV storage lots in the county. They're concerned that it's somewhat unfair, that they've gone through the whole trouble of getting a development permit for recreational vehicle storage, and then the guy across the road has ten, fifteen RVs on his land, and he didn't get any permits, and he's just claiming, oh, they're just for family, this kind of thing. If we don't have some kind of cutoff, and I'm not saying it has to be three, three is what we proposed, if you don't have some kind of cutoff in your land use bylaw as to the number of RVs on a parcel of land, technically, you're punishing the respectable business owners that are going through the process while rewarding those that aren't necessarily, so that's why this is in place as well. We want to encourage business through this. So this was definitely a major concern for a lot of people with RV storage lots in the county. There was a concern relating that studies relating to transportation, engineering, biology, environment, slope stability, and other geotechnical matters didn't need to be reviewed by the appropriate parties in their fields, by external consultants, and that they could be reviewed in-house. The county doesn't have engineering professionals in-house to properly address and provide guidance on the supporting studies submitted. A TIA requires a transportation engineer, biophysical impact assessment, a biologist. All municipalities in the province of Alberta require the review of supporting studies by a professional, that's why they have provincial regulations and licensing requirements for these bodies. The county would open itself up to significant legal challenges if we, if I was reviewing a transportation report, and I'm not an engineer, for one example. So we can't, we need to sign off by the appropriate bodies for these studies to ensure that they're built right and future frustrations are addressed and corrected at the development Issue five, so there was a concern with the requirement for digital copies of reports, studies, and plans. This is a standard requirement across all municipalities in Alberta. Furthermore, with the expanding use of computers and digital storage, it's important we have digital copies for easy reference or transfer to outside sources. This is already a requirement in our current land use bylaw, which was back, approved back in '07, nothing's changing with this, this in our new LUB. Issue six, there was the opinion that requirements for development permits and conditions on a DP should be related to the value of construction. Planning's not based on the value of a development, as that has little to no bearing in regards to its impact on adjacent landowners, the need to upgrade infrastructure, the suitability of a selected site location, or the potential DP requirements or studies required to review an application. The value of a development doesn't impact these key variables. There's many examples of very high-cost construction that could have little to no impact on adjacent landowners, or no nuisance effect, as compared to a low-cost development that might have multiple planning challenges. So value is just not, the value of construction is not an appropriate measurement for planning. There was the idea that there should be no rules on shipping containers and that they should not require DPs, so once again, this has been in place since 2007, and since that went into effect, the proposed regulations are the same as the previous, except there is a limit on the numbers, which is in place with most land use bylaws that have been updated recently in rural municipalities. But as noted, as with the whole land use bylaw, all enforcement's done on a complaint-driven basis. We're not, we'd have, you'd have to quadruple us to go up and down the roads to look for any enforcement issues, so unless there's a particularly issue with a CCAN, we're not going out and enforcing that particular item. But these regulations do provide staff with the ability, if someone does have an issue or if there is a safety or health or nuisance concern for somebody in the county, that having these in place does provide us the opportunity to address that appropriately. There is a note that farm animals should be allowed in hamlets, and Phoenix was noted as an example. Also, although some of the hamlets are lower density, smaller in scale, and more like clustered acreages, there are other hamlets in the county similar in scale to residential neighborhoods that you would find in places like Calgary and Strathmore, like Carsland and Gleesham, for example. It's not always appropriate for horses, pigs, and animals in these higher-density areas that may result in the public nuisance, such as the smell and noise. That's why we base this not on, animal units aren't based on if you're in hamlet boundaries, it's based on your zoning. You can still have country residential or agricultural zonings within a hamlet if your parcel size is appropriate, to allow for farm animals. In particular, you look at, Phoenix was the example, I'm more familiar with Palm Springs. There are generally comprehensive planned country estate neighborhoods within city limits in places like that, but they have equestrian trails and multiple acres of land per parcel, and the animals allowed is based on their zoning, not the fact that they're in city limits. So we're technically following that exact same process with ours here, in that if your zone, if someone applies for a twenty-eight, twenty-lot country residential subdivision with equestrian trails, because they're in the hamlet, it won't stop them from animal units. They're zoned appropriately, they can have animal units. So it's not, we're not prohibiting anything like that, and we're actually in line with the type of developments that were referenced, it's the same policy framework. Circulation radiance was noted to be increased to double its size, so the draft land use bylaw is actually, actually already doubling the circulation area from a half mile to one mile. So this is two quarter sections in every direction around a quarter section. So say you apply for a rezoning on your quarter, the impacts are largely those that are right around you. If you're starting to stretch two, three, four quarters out, what are the impacts on that person? That's starting to go again, that's a loss of personal property rights for a landowner, as there's potentially additional difficulties in the approvals process through such a large circulation area. And as I noted, the impacts of a proposed development decrease the farther you are from it. We have other stipulations in our draft LUB, such as the requirement for potentially mandatory open houses if it's more contentious, Twitter posts, Facebook posts, and using social media to post awareness on potentially debatable applications. That said, the circulation area is proposed to double from a half mile to one mile in the draft LUB. Okay, number ten, it was noted that there should be no direct control districts in the draft LUB, and all development should be forced to conform to the existing land use districts. Once again, this, the direct control districts are to encourage innovation, unique development types, and freedoms for landowners. If we, if you don't have direct control districts, you're forcing people to lump developments into the districts that we've specifically mandated and planned out now, when maybe five years from now, someone has a different idea, they come in, they might want to be able to do something with it, council might decide it had merits. You need a direct control district to have stuff like that take place in the county. If you don't have direct control districts and people have to fit in, you're stifling a lot of potential development and opportunity in the county and forcing development to the noted districts. If you did that, developments like Speargrass would not be able to exist, as they wouldn't fit in any of the districts, or other use, specific uses that may not fit within our bylaw. Direct control districts are in place in all municipalities across the province and mandated by the Municipal Government Act. If, there's nothing we can do with this draft LUB update to stop direct control districts, they're just something that people apply for separately, so that's, kind of addresses that concern with direct control districts. Okay, the third speaker was Ms. Appleby from Civic Works Planning and Design. They were just noting on behalf of Telsec Property Corporation that they'd like to see their property that's not currently a golf course remain as agricultural in zoning. They are, and my response is, they are, we're currently working with them on the direct control districts, so we'll separate their golf course and their agriculture lands out into two separate cells in a direct control district to work to address their concerns. Fourth speaker, Mr. Wallace. He wanted, his first issue was he wanted to note that he supported the proposed land use change to direct control district to incorporate mapping in the noted uses, so we're glad to see that. And then issue two, he requested the public hearing to have the used principal building added. So I've worked through this with him as well, and I, we noted that principal building isn't a use in any of the land use districts. A principal building on a, you don't receive a DP for a principal building on a site, but whatever the use that is primary that you receive a DP for on a site is the principal building. So say it's a dwelling, that's your principal building on a site, or say it's a business of some sort, that's the principal building. So we don't actually need to put principal building in his, in his specific district, it'll be covered by whatever the building, the main building is on that site, so we don't need to add it as a use. Fifth speaker, Mr. Telford. He noted he shouldn't have to reapply for a kennel license and that it should be grandfathered in without having to come back to council, and he made some references of concern regarding switching from agricultural general to country residential, but clarified that the largest issue was regarding the process for receiving a kennel DP on the property. I can't comment on the past processes and concerns that may have arisen from that, but I can note in the new draft LUB, kennel permits will not be temporary, they'll be permanent. Once you have your kennel permit, you don't have to keep coming back to get it renewed, because that's a lot of investment you put in. You put in your kennels, you put in the buildings, you put in the runs. To have that subject to three years and political cycles and other concerns such as that, from a land use perspective, staff's of the opinion it's not appropriate, so kennels will be a permanent use as proposed in the draft LUB. The sixth speaker was Ms. Pringle. She had a question regarding the mapping and location of the Eagle Lake RV Resort, and she noted that it was missing from the Eagle Lake Direct Control District map. This was planned, the Eagle Lake campground's proposed to be removed from the Eagle Lake Direct Control District, as the use is already fit into our Parks and Recreation District, so we'll take it out of the ELDC and rezonate to Parks and Recreation District. And she had noted she didn't receive any correspondence on this. Wheatland County is the landowner of the campground, so this is why a letter might not have been received by the interested party, as she was the leasie of the lands. Issue number two, she had a question regarding if development permits are required for campground signs. So all existing signage within the campground would be grandfathered, but secondly, directional and informational signs are exempt from requiring development permits as well. Signage included as part of a DP does not require a separate development permit. So say you come in for this big community of sixty lots, and it's got all these signs and neighborhood signs, you're not gonna have to go get DPs for every separate sign. If they're all shown and noted in your initial DP application, or say it's a business with a front sign, if all the signs are noted, you're not gonna need to get separate DPs for those signs. It's if maybe you came in later for a particular type of sign, most are exempt from a DP, but say there was one that wasn't exempt, say a big billboard, that would need a separate DP, but ones that are part of a business don't require separate development permits. Issue number three, Ms. Pringle noted the LUB specifies the requirement for a campground major development, that there's one full-time staff member, and this seems overly specific. So this is just a requirement to assist in categorizing and differentiating between campground minor and campground major. For logistical and nuisance-related concerns, campgrounds of the site size should have at least one staff member present. However, the bylaw's not, does not allow us to go in and scrutinize her employment records or onerously control this, but we do need to try to create some kind of chart or format to break out the different types of campgrounds, and this was one way that we saw in a lot of other rural bylaws, that they were doing it to try to distinguish between the two campgrounds, particularly as our campground majors allow for year-round storage of the vehicles. Seventh speaker was Ms. Deborah Key. She voiced support for the fact that dark sky policies being proposed in the draft, are being proposed in the draft LUB, and noted that she'd like to see further policies supporting dark sky, separate from the land use bylaw, as other counties and MDs have done. So we're glad to see the speakers in support of that. This section is very preliminary in general in nature, so any, to have real teeth, it would need a separate dark sky policy, but we're not working on that right now, and that'd have to be a separate request of council. Issue number two, Ms. Key noted a more general land use comment, that she does not like to see commercial or industrial activities in rural or non-planned for areas of the county. One example was the nuisance effects associated with the Rocking R Ranch wedding tent. So our response was, in response to a number of the concerns raised throughout the consultation process on the draft LUB, we added a use known as entertainment venue, which would require venues such as formal wedding event centers, agritourism, et cetera, to rezonate to the appropriate land use district, which adds a degree of communication, consultation, and public awareness about a proposed project. So that's how we felt we could handle concerns such as that with noise and traffic. The eighth speaker was Ms. Gregory. She noted concerns over the maximum fence height in the draft LUB, feeling that the six-foot maximum in height was too low, as many of the existing fences on their property are higher than the noted maximum. So this was a bit of a wording cleanup in that, in, outside of setbacks, the fence height is not a concern for staff. If you're, outside of your setbacks from your property lines, your fence could be forty feet, it's not, that's not the issue. The issue is when the fences are along the property lines and the roadways from a visibility and viewing perspective, and this, these were discussed in coordination with Public Works. So we have amended this section, so it's much clearer in that fence heights outside of setbacks are not regulated, and that there's specific requirements along the setbacks, but we have proposed to increase the height as well to the seven feet, which is in line with most other bylaws on this matter. She noted concerns with the RV storage limitations for parcels that do not have a DP for a particular use. Once again, this, this is what I noted previously, if three is seen as too small of a minimum to allow personal RV storage on a property, council can decide to change that, but staff does feel it's important to have some kind of threshold, just to help us distinguish from an enforcement perspective legitimate recreational storage businesses versus non. Ms. Gregory voiced support for medical marijuana production facilities as in allowed use in all areas of the county, not just the WASP, West Highway one ASP, and as I stated earlier, that's up to council if they wish to change that, we have proposed to leave the regulations in place. Ninth speaker, Mr. Kamart. He noted that the WID setback seems excessive and should be re-reviewed with the WID, and that the county should consider alternate setbacks. So the regulation for the WID setbacks was reviewed extensively with the WID in early September, and they signed off on that approach from the county in regards of requiring the maximum setback, but allowing it to be smaller if there was a written sign-off from the WID specifically. We did some research, and this is how a lot of other LUBs in areas with irrigation districts work, with their irrigation district on setback restrictions for development. In addition, we consulted with our legal counsel, who was in support of the noted regulation in the draft LUB, due to the fact that the setback's in place to address site suitability concerns. So because there's site suitability concerns at play related to that setback, the county does have some obligations to look at having some type of setback in the LUB. Issue number two, Mr. Kamart noted there was a deficiency in the DP's not required section for decks with a, with a missing requirement for one feet. So, yeah, good point, we did make that change to have the cutoff remain at either two feet or less, you're exempt from, there's different setbacks versus if you're two feet or greater. There's no gray man zone of the one to two feet anymore. The tenth speaker was Ms. Cleve. Her first concern was regarding whether staff would be able to go on her property without her permission as a result of the draft land use bylaw. So the draft LUB does not allow in itself for staff to enter a property without someone's permission. The MGA speaks to the ability of a designated officer, sorry, to enter private property under certain conditions for development-related items. And then another, section 653, brackets two of the MGA, speaks to the ability of a designated officer to enter private property for subdivision-related items under certain conditions as well. I'll just note for our process, in cases where there is an application for subdivision, re-designation, or development, we have a form that we have everyone sign, saying that they're authorized us to go on their property, and I always, well, we always call and try to set up a time that works for them, we're not just going out on people's land without talking with them. However, none of that's tied to the LUB, that's tied to the MGA provincially. Issue number two, Ms. Cleve noted that farm animals and livestock should be allowed on hamlet zone parcels. So once again, it's the same response as previously in terms of focusing this on zoning, rather than on whether you're within hamlet limits, so we can have that with, for the smaller parcels. Number three, this was also noted previously, and that CCAN should not require a development permit, and once, we've required development permits for CCAN since 2007's bylaw was approved, so we're, that regulation is unchanged in terms of that they require development permit. Eleventh speaker was Mr. Rappel, noting that farm animals and livestock should be allowed on hamlet zone parcels, so the response is, once again, the same as previous. If this, if there's a concern or council would like to see this revised, staff can look at alternate ways, maybe looking at smaller hamlet lots versus larger ones, as there's some unique situations, but typically, it should be based on zoning, as country residential is at least one acre, whereas the hamlet residential parcels are much smaller than that. Mr. Kester, on behalf of GP Jewell, noted he'd like to see the setback restrictions for solar farms relaxed for more extensive coverage of the parcel. So the draft LUB does have setbacks applied universally, regardless of development type. At the DP stage, variance can be made to the MPC, noting specific rationale for the needed variance. There are a number of restrictions in the current LUB regarding solar projects, and then there'll be just some proposals with draft changes in terms of the minimum site size.
Colton, I don't think his name was Kester, it was close to it, but I don't think it was.
Coster, oh, sorry, my apologies. Mr. Coster, sorry. Don't have a brother in the industry? No? Okay.
No relation.
No relation.
Not even spelled that good.
Thank you. Mr. Dobson, his concern was regarding why only parcels eighty-plus acres can have two dwellings, but those, those less than eighty acres with the same zoning cannot have two dwellings. So the minimum parcel size requirements based on a parcel's density and the overall population density spread throughout the county, not the land use zoning. The zoning of a parcel was not relevant to the overall density, but rather the per-acreage spread of the homes on the quarter. So if this number was to be lowered and the five per parcel per quarter rule of the MDP was in place, you could effectively double the number of dwellings on a parcel. spread of the homes on the quarter. So if this number was to be lowered and the five parcel per quarter rule of the M D P was in place, you could effectively double the number of dwellings on a parcel, which would be definitely a different direction. So this regulation's unchanged in the draft L U B from the current one. So we're not proposing any changes in the draft L U B from what's been in place since two thousand and seven in regards to this. So that concludes my presentation of the responses to the previous public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Colton. That's a nice brief. Does there any members of public have any questions, concerns, or comments? When you get up to make any address, please proceed to the podium and make sure the mic is turned on and state your name for the record, please.
It's Steve Marshman. Just to respond to some of the stuff here, I guess that's why you don't get a lot of people at public hearings, because you don't actually listen to, you know, what we were saying. You know, three of those comments in there when he's saying that, I said, we don't need engineers in the county for staff. That's not what I said. I said you shouldn't need engineer drawings, period, for that kind of development. And the cost structure for it should be based on what you're doing to that property. If you're spending in a massive development, spending a million dollars, maybe engineer drawings should be looked at. If you're putting a mobile home in or putting a smaller development in, a lot of these requirements shouldn't be looked at because they're a huge expense to the person trying to do that development. It's really frustrating when what we just saw is what the county gets out of it. As far as C C A Ns and stuff go, it's, all this stuff, it's, when you buy a piece of land, you should be able to use it as you see fit for most intensive purposes unless you're having some environmental issues or something serious, which is covered under a whole bunch of different laws. It was interesting to note that he mentioned loss of personal rights, because that's basically what a lot of this stuff's doing, is eroding our personal rights to do what we need C fit to do with our property. If I want to have five C C A Ns and build a nice shop out of it, I should have that right, and it should have nothing to do with the county. If I want to paint it pink, it should have nothing to do with the county. The thirteenth speaker, as far as density goes, it's really interesting to listen to the county staff talk about density and only being able to have two homes per eighty acres. When you're doing this kind of development, maybe that eighty acres is tied to a five-thousand-acre farm, or the density won't matter. And then the county, at the same time, will go put thirty-four homes on a hundred-eight farm property. Density, not an issue. That's okay. You know, there's still that double standard, and that was my concern with direct control districts, was that that's where the county's trying to shove some of these things that don't fit. But really, when you step back and look at development, it'll all fit. If it doesn't quite fit in industrial, commercial, because it's some new innovative thing, make a small change to that bylaw under industrial general. If it doesn't quite fit in hamlet, make a small change to hamlet. You can make stuff work without having to have a direct control thing, which puts a burden on council, because every time any change comes up, it has to come to them and give staff something that fits. So there's lots of other folks that want to get up and speak, but it's really frustrating when we spend time to come into these things and staff basically just puts it all to bed, and no, we just don't like it. That's not fair. We're all here because we're frustrated. With staff, one thing that really made me mad this past few weeks was with the seventeen-hundred parcels that are getting rezoned. Staff's been telling the people that are being rezoned, well, nothing's going to change. It won't affect you. You're getting differentiated from ag, or you're getting differentiated from industrial. That will down the road give the county council or county staff the ability to change the rules on that parcel. So it will affect you. Staff has been telling these people that not much happened at the last public hearings. Not much is going to happen at this one. People are happy with it. You don't need to come directly from staff. I'm glad lots of people came out, but staff was telling them, well, don't bother. That's terrible. That's unacceptable. And if you want to investigate it, we can certainly introduce you to folks that have said that. So my recommendation would be to shoot this thing right down and start over.
Okay, thank you. Next, please.
Hello, everyone. My name's Theo Moran, and I'm here to discuss the bylaw land use for cannabis production facility as per eight point twelve point one B. As per the existing area, the structure plan only allows for land located along the west of Highway One. And what we're proposing for the council is to review that and consider direct control for areas zoned already in I G for that use.
Okay. Any other comments?
Strictly that.
Okay. Any questions? Alice?
Through the chair. I have talked about marijuana, and we don't know what the federal government is going to come down for rules and regulations. But I did talk to Sergeant Tyler over here and asked him to come today and give his opinion on maybe what we could do with our bylaw that could assist in what the R C M P may have to deal with in having grow ups, these bigger grow ups within our county. So Tyler's here today, I wouldn't mind hearing from him.
Hi, thank you.
Good afternoon. As Alice said, I'm Sergeant Tyler Coddling. I'm with the Gwichon R C M P. I'm the operations manager. Alice asked the question, as she said, the R C M P's stance on the land use for commercial marijuana grows. I think in large part, it's something that the R C P has to stay out of. It's a decision made by the federal government as far as what is allowed and what regulations will be put in place. And the ethical side, again, I think we respond to the needs of the community in the county and the people of Canada. So those laws, as they're set forth, we will support, whether individuals might have a different opinion or not. As an organization, we can't vary from that. My own concern when it comes to marijuana, commercial licenses and buildings is more strictly to do with, from my own experience, is the potential for misuse of those buildings. I think if the use of those buildings is done in accordance with what is laid down by the Government of Canada, then I don't think there's any cause for concern where the potential will be, is if people deviate from that. So a little background on myself, I spent seven years in Ontario as part of drug and organized crime investigations. And we had several investigations into commercial marijuana license operations where they had used it as an opportunity, once they could fly under the radar, to bring in more and more licenses or to expand beyond what their license entailed. So I think as long as the county's prepared to ensure that everything, once these operations are in place, that everything is being done in accordance with the rules that they're supposed to operate on. And that includes things like water usage, the water that's coming in out of the building, the power that's coming in out of the building, the safety precautions that are in place, venting, things like that. There are concerns with, anywhere, anyplace marijuana is being grown, that the conditions themselves contribute themselves to things like fires and injury to people due to chemicals, anything else like that. So as long as the county's prepared to make sure that the checks and balances are in place to adhere to the rules, then the R C P, I think, wouldn't have any concerns with whatever the county decides as far as what land use is appropriate for it, in consultation with your constituents, obviously. And then the only other concern, obviously, is if something is being used as a criminal enterprise. But I think that is not something that the county has to concern itself with. That's where we have to undertake on our own, being mindful of the Charter of Rights and Freedoms. We can't really ask the county to get involved in anything like that. We'll deal with it as those situations arise. The only other thing is that I'm not sure what is in place as far as who is able to get these licenses, but you would hope that these are people with criminal record checks and that they have sufficient grounding within the community to make this a viable business, just like any other, I think. Any questions?
Any questions? Ben?
Not a question, just a comment. I just received an email. The Task Force on Cannabis Legislation and Regulations federally presented its framework yesterday, no, today, the thirteenth, I guess it is, on regulations to the access of cannabis. And it's a hundred-and-twenty-page document that we, I kind of scanned through it at lunch, and it's pretty intensive. It talks about everything you've talked about. So until we have a chance for staff to even look at what that is, to make an assumption that we're going to allow it to happen all over the place or in certain spots, we have a, in our land use bylaw now, in the West Area Structure Plan, and it's not changing for the future. And until we see what this document says, I don't think I'd be willing to look at anything until we've had a good look at what's going on under the federal legislation.
One other thing I should mention that the council should take in consideration is, anyplace where something like the production of marijuana is going on, there is an increased likelihood of outside criminal activity, meaning someone could have a completely legitimate grow business being conducted absolutely within accordance with all the rules in place, and another criminal group could come in to try and break in and take their product from them. So there is a potential for violent crime in the locations where this is going on. And I don't say that to try and discourage any activity, but it's just something I think that has to be taken into consideration when you're looking at the locations where anything like this would be put.
Okay. Brenda?
Think of the carbon tax that this is not going to get. You just talked about the criminal element of it, and yet medicinal marijuana has a different take than street drugs. Am I right about this? Or is it all the same, and we're just kidding ourselves that one is medicinal and one is street?
I'm sorry, are you speaking about the product itself or the industry that it's involved in?
Well, your suggestion was that this draws a criminal amount of people into these marijuana drug operations. And this is a medicinal marijuana drug operation. It's under my understanding, it doesn't have the same effects as what street drugs do. So my query to this is if the people are growing, they're being tested by doctors and scientists on a regular basis, because you have to turn that in. And yes, I don't know who's got one plant in the corner that's smoking it themselves. But on a basis of distribution and what they have, they have to test this stuff to go out the door at a certain level. So my query is, is when you say it draws a criminal element, then it seems like you're telling me that medicinal and street-grade are the same. And that's what I'm asking you, because as far as I know, medicinal is different.
Okay. Maybe I wasn't clear on what I was saying. I'm not speaking about the people that are necessarily producing the marijuana themselves or what the intended use of that marijuana is. So if someone potentially could be engaged in a criminal enterprise where they're going to sell it privately on the street for profit, I think, again, that's something that's way too much conjecture for anybody to offer an opinion on. You're talking about human beings that will either abide by the rules or they won't, and there's no way that anybody can say what would happen. What I'm speaking about is the historical link between a facility where something like marijuana is being grown, because another outside criminal group can come in and try and steal that marijuana to sell on the street for their own usage. It has nothing to do with the people that are producing it. And it's not a judgment on their intent or anything else like that. It's strictly something that the council should be aware of, is there is the potential. So if you put a facility next to a school, you potentially could have a violent altercation between someone breaking into the facility. And this isn't just me conjecturing, it has happened. There could be a violent altercation where someone is coming into the facility. So all I'm saying is that I think precautions, when you're looking at land use for these facilities, that should be part of your consideration, is making sure that if something goes wrong, if there's a fire or a violent offense or anything like that takes place, that it's not going to affect innocent people in the surrounding area. That was all my comment was meant to be.
Any other questions? Thanks for them comments. Okay. Any other comments? Okay.
Sorry, just in regards to the security measures, basically the stringent regulations that the federal government has in place right now in regards to the M M P R, which is the Medical Marijuana Regulations for Producers, is extremely stringent as far as security measures go and as far as the actual structure of the building goes. So there's a lot of measures that we need to take to ensure that we do have the security in place, and that is of the highest grade, essentially. There's onsite security, there's vaults, things like that, that are in place to mitigate this type of criminal activity. And as far as the establishment goes itself, all the people that are involved in it do go through criminal background checks. It's an extremely stringent industry at this point in time. And to say that someone could break and enter into something like that would be the same as, say, a pharmaceutical company to take opioids or something like that, per se, right? So it's equal risk, per se, but it hasn't happened out of the thirty-six licensed producers that are currently in place. So just, that's an additional comment there. Very safe and secure as far as it goes.
Okay, thanks for that.
Thank you.
Okay, next, please. Yes. You've been standing the longest. Go ahead. Go ahead. Go ahead.
I'm Margaret Golly, and I would like to comment on Mr. Coster's, the last time he spoke, on behalf of the solar farm. We're happy to see that the land use bylaw, the setbacks are staying the same. We are opposed to the Clooney Solar Farm as it is currently proposed by G P Jewell. It will unduly interfere and affect the enjoyment and value of our property. Our house is one hundred and thirty-four feet from the gravel road that separates us from this proposed project. Our parcel is a four-point-one-seven-acre triangular-shaped lot. The proposed solar farm will encompass the entire north borderline of our property. At this time, our north border looks out onto grasslands, some trees, deers grazing, the usual rural view. The proposed solar farm would replace that view with nine-foot-high rows of solar panels. These panels will be surrounded by an eight-foot-high chain-link fence with danger high-voltage signs. We are being asked to believe, trust, that it will not interfere with the enjoyment of or the market value of our home. We have been assured that visual screening will be part of the proposal. We haven't seen the development permit as yet, so we are still asking, what will the screening consist of? Will it provide complete, all-seasoning screening at the onset? Or will it be some type of vegetation that might do the job five or ten years down the road? G P Jewell does not believe that their project will reduce the market value of our home. Therefore, they will not offer anything in the form of a good neighbor agreement, even though every person we ask, and we've asked many, would you buy a home next door to a solar farm? The answer's always the same, no. The owner of the property in question does not live on his land. We live on our land. The only people who will have to face this project and the repercussions of it twenty-four-seven are my husband and myself. G P Jewell keeps insisting that they reached out to us before mailing the formal notice to all people in the general area. Regarding this reaching out, there was never a knock on our door, when we were home, that is. An area note left under our doormat, no phone call. We're at a loss about this reaching out. We have researched other solar farms and how other adjacent landowners felt about having a solar farm in their backyard. One person said, why don't they go build this thing next to the dump? It already looks ugly at the dump. Another comment was, the solar company will be a winner, the landowner leasing their property to the solar company will be a winner, the adjacent landowners to this project will be the only losers, the only ones getting the short end of this stick. We are the only landowner in the Clooney area that will have this industrial site in our face, in such close proximity of our home. Green energy is the way of the future. Most people agree with and support that, as we do also. We respectfully request that our county give careful consideration to the physical location of this project and how we know that it will affect us, the only adjacent landowner. Great concern is shown for the animals' habitat. Should not our habitat be of as much concern? We realize that this is a financially lucrative proposal for Wheatland County and the landowner leasing their land for this project. We understand that the Wheatland County has a fiscal responsibility to all of its constituents, not just us. We believe that as a county, we need to consider carefully where projects like these are going to be. where projects like these are going to be located and the type of conditions that will be imposed on developers so as not to unduly interfere with the enjoyment of or value of adjacent property as stated in our land use bylaw. And just one further thing, the next person standing up here with the same complaint as me, maybe you're going to be surrounded on two sides or three sides. And maybe it's only going to be 100 feet away. And you know, this, this is just the beginning. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Mr. Chairman and members of council. My name is Lisa Tippman. I'm a planner and associate at BNA Planning Group out of Calgary. TransCanada has engaged us to begin working collaboratively with municipalities and developers to have a discussion, a broader discussion about planning in and around pipelines. TransCanada would like to be involved in the early stages of the development process. The land use bylaw is a key document in guiding development decisions for the county. We submitted a letter, we were circulated as an external agency, the draft land use bylaw, and we submitted a letter on August the 24th to administration. Administration accepted one of our recommendations, but we did have other ones. The general intent of them was as follows. We would like to ensure that pipelines are shown on development applications. The reason for this is that there are regulations that regulate distance from pipelines from development. And we would like to, the county, administration, council, and TransCanada to be aware of that. We have, we would like to have development applications such as subdivisions, land use redesignations, and development permits within 200 meters of a pipeline, refer to TransCanada for comment. And I have a representative from TransCanada with me who will be explaining why 200 meters is a metric that we're looking at. And the other final and third intent of our comments was to help prevent pipeline damage by minimizing pipeline crossings and disturbances around pipelines and subdivision planning and development. TransCanada is, wishes to work collaboratively with the county so that we can understand the amount and type of development along pipelines and to ensure awareness of pipeline regulations because ultimately it's about safety in and around pipelines. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mark Rochon from TransCanada, who will be giving a really brief presentation about why 50 meters and 200 meters are development considerations for TransCanada.
Thank you. 200 meters, was that from TransCanada pipelines or all pipelines?
Well, the National Energy Board, well, Mark can speak. But the National Energy Board regulates what's called class upgrades. And that is a consideration of the number of people that are within 200 meters of a pipeline. And so I'll leave it to the expert, but it is, it is a National Energy Board regulation.
Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Mark Rochon. I'm with TransCanada Pipelines. I'm the area operation manager. We, my area comes some of Wheatland County. And then we head east towards the Saskatchewan border. Take a little bit of your time, show us, show you a presentation here. Other way, there we go. So TransCanada Corporation, right now we have 90,300 kilometers of pipeline within North America. We are 25% of the continental demand. We are the largest natural gas storage operator with 664 BCF of capacity, billion cubic feet. We are Canada's largest private sector power generation. We have 17 facilities with 10,500 megawatt capacity. As well, we are also liquids pipeline operator with 4,300 kilometers of liquids pipeline. This is the section that affects Wheatland County. So you can see we have a number of lines within Wheatland County. We have some main lines that head through as well as some laterals. These lines are under the Nova Gas Transmissions System. They are high pressure natural gas pipelines. There's also some above ground facilities such as valves and measurement facilities within your county. We are a National Energy Board regulated company. So we are federally regulated as we cross provincial boundaries and borders. This changes some of the regulations that we are held to as compared to some of the other companies that you might be more familiar with. Early engagement, we are wanting to engage with the counties and with developers early so that we can work with you. So you have a, the ability to proceed with your development in a, in a safe and efficient way. So never, it's never too early to engage us. And this is why we have asked for some of the boundaries that we have, some of the notifications that we have. The BNA Planning Group, so some contact information here that's engaging a number of the counties. The regulations that govern TransCanada Pipeline Construction and Operation specify the examination of the type and density of development in proximity of the pipelines. So this is where the 200 meters comes in. Depending on the type of development and the density of that development, we are required to have different pressures or different thicknesses of pipe in place. And so if there is a change to the land use, we would need to work with the developer and the landowner so that we are in compliance with this regulation. The reexamination is completed to ensure the public safety and the safety of the nearby dwellings. Land use changes can trigger expensive upgrades to existing pipelines. The cost of the upgrades is borne by the pipeline company. So this is our prescribed area. This is designated by the National Energy Board. So 30 meters either way from center of pipe is the prescribed area. If there is activity within this area, we would need to be notified such as digging or development on, over, or under the pipeline. The activities that require consent from the pipeline company within that prescribed zone, construction of a facility on, across, along, or under the pipeline, including on the right of way, also ground disturbance activities within the prescribed area which extend 30 meters from each side of the central line of the pipe, as well as operation of vehicles and mobile equipment across the right of way outside of the traveled portion of a highway or a public road. The highways and the public roads are already designated for crossings. Crossings of non-agricultural equipment outside of that area require an application. The reason for this is the damage prevention. Every contravention of the National Energy Board's Pipeline Damage Prevention Regulation, all damage to the pipe caused by, identified by during the construction of a facility across, on, or along, or under a pipeline, the operation or maintenance or the removal of a facility, an activity that causes a ground disturbance within the prescribed area, or the operation of vehicles or mobile equipment across the pipeline. So we need to know about this. If there is any contravention to any of these regulations, we have the obligation to report to the National Energy Board this. The reason that we are here and bringing this up as land use, you can see that mechanical damage is the leading threat to pipelines for incidents between 1991 and 2010. You can see an example of a right of way here with development all the way around it. The right of way is being used for public use. It's fenced and it's safe for public and recreational use. You see the rocks along here that are preventing the vehicle traffic from entering the right of way. And you also see the signage indicating that there is high pressure buried natural gas pipelines there with contact information on it. Here's an example of a pipeline right of way through the middle with a development going on. You can see that the green spaces are fenced off so that they don't allow for unauthorized crossings of the pipeline. So they're preventing damage to it. And so we're working with the land developer with early engagement so that we proceed with a safe development. Here is a development that's in progress. And you can see there's a fence line in there and the arrow where the actual pipe is buried. So the fence is preventing unauthorized crossings of the line. Once the development is fully completed, then it would be reseeded and fenced out in a more aesthetic way. Class upgrades, so to the question of the 200 meters. So again, class upgrades are triggered based on the population density. They're purely at our cost. And so we need to know if there is a development planned that's going to intensify the number of people within that area so that we can meet this regulation. If you were wondering about the 30 meters and why it's so wide, so you can see ongoing here, so there's the construction activity. And you can see how much land that it actually takes in order to excavate and in this case, perform a class upgrade where they actually would cut out the pipe and weld in a heavier pipe in its place. Yes. You may.
Before you go further, when you're, does it make a difference on the size of your pipe and the pounds per square inch you're putting through that pipe, whether it's 200 meters or 100 meters?
The, the regulation is the 200 meters. And then based on the 200 meters, they'll do the engineering assessment of what pressure and what thickness are required. So the 200 meters is just a notification.
Yeah, because your main line is totally different than from a small, smaller line that goes to a plant or, or to a small unit. So are you saying that doesn't matter what size the pipe is or what pressure in that pipe is, it's still all 200 meters? I find that...
The notification is 200 meters. And so the, the lines are anywhere from two inch up to 48 inch with varying pressures. You're correct.
Yeah.
And based on the thickness and the pressure, it's the engineering assessment that starts at the 200 meters, not any, not any other changes to the development. Just the engineering assessment is triggered.
Okay, that makes more sense than what I was taking it before. I've worked in this industry, so I'm kind of questioning you there. It's okay.
No problem. Thank you.
Any other questions? Colton, any comments?
Through the chair, a lot of the concerns related to subdivision, we've chosen not to address in the land use bylaws. They're more related to our subdivision application process. We can definitely look more specifically at those forms and maybe our policies internally in regards to that. And definitely will be taking this into consideration as we move forward. But we did make the decision not to have a number of the recommendations included in the land use bylaw as we've shifted, we've stayed away from how we outline our subdivision process.
Okay, having said that, then in no way detract or defer any of the responsibility on notifying these companies when development occurs.
So through the chair, we notify all of these companies when they're listed on title. So if they're on the title of where an application is taking place, they would be referred through that. We are not referring currently, we're not going 200 meters beyond that and looking at all the pipelines within that range. We've so far taken the position that we haven't needed to do that as per our land use bylaw. And this is the first time we've, well, not, they've sent this back in August. This is the first company that we've had this concern raised by in regards to their works. But we'll definitely continue to look at it as we move forward. From our, but from our subdivision process, we do take a lot of these into consideration already as we go through it.
Okay. Any other questions, more comments? Any questions, Brenda?
I gotta ask, sometimes I just don't know when to... So you have this pipeline that goes across the country and you have it so that before you drive on any of the pipelines, which are usually just look like clearings, how do you manage to get notification of everybody that drives in to go hunting and do all those kinds of things? Just out of curiosity, because we're, as municipalities, we're not out there, I don't have a peace officer sitting at the edge of the road saying, no, go on there.
So you'll see our signage at normal road crossings to identify where the actual line is. It might not be directly below there. We are concerned with anything over one ton typically and heavy equipment that's non-agricultural.
Okay, any other questions? Thanks for your presentation. Thanks for coming.
Thank you for your time.
Okay. Go ahead, next.
Hello.
Hello.
David McAllister with the general manager at the Western Irrigation District and our board member, Ray Kettenbach, who's chair of our board.
Okay.
We just wanted to come and thank you for the opportunity to previously comment. Appreciated the review by staff earlier. We prepared a letter for submission into the record. Very much appreciate the embedding our 30 meters in the land use bylaw. It will help us in so many ways and so many initiatives that we work together on related to water quality and, and safety and safe water use within both the county and within our irrigation district. And again, really just wanted to see that that, that what was in the discussion be embedded explicitly within the bylaw.
Okay, thanks. Did you give a copy of the letter to staff?
Yeah, just...
Okay, thanks, thanks for that. Any questions? Alice?
And I've had a, a bear in my saddle for a long time with you guys. And I've owned land where I've had your pipeline on my property and you won't move it. But you want another 100 meters or 100 feet designated for your use. So here's where I'm coming from. A lot of these properties, you have purchased X amount of acres on a quarter section, I think it's about 20 acres, for your right of way. Why don't you keep your pipeline on your own right of way? And don't come and freeze some more land that the farmer can't use by asking the county to put in certain 30 meters from your boundary to be frozen. Like I, I don't get it. It's your property, you should keep your pipe on your own property. Don't take part of my land or somebody else's land to do your job. See where I'm coming from?
Okay, so I recognize that there are individual cases. What we're talking about is the general case where we've got right of way and then people own property adjacent to it.
Yeah.
And we're just wanting to see that we be notified when there's any variance proposed to the setbacks that are in the draft, basically. And that's what we're looking to see.
Where I'm coming from, I don't want any setbacks. I don't agree with our staff. You already have a right of way. If your line is kept in your right of way, you don't need further land that is frozen from a farmer to protect your pipeline. So I don't think we should be protecting you in any way. If your line is on your property, you're already protected.
And it's slightly different between an open canal versus a closed pipeline, which, yeah...
And you're open, what you've done over the years, you've cleaned that canal out always on one side. So over the years, you've actually moved your open canal onto existing farmland that you don't own, nor do you pay for, or lease, okay? That's where I'm coming from. So why would we allow you to do that? And why would the county protect you from that? You should be putting your open canal back on your own property and look after it.
Brenda?
Go ahead. I'm done. So, as with anything, as with pipelines and everything else, I don't see a need for a 30-meter setback. I think if you want to have a setback, you're on the list to call. You're on the list of notifications with all our development. And that's what I see every time, WID, no concerns, no concerns. As far as a 30-meter setback, or you want to rebuild, then it's like the county, when we want to redo roads, we got to go in and do a land deal and negotiate and do all that as well. So I think that's up to you. You guys are the water guys, we're the road guys. And it's up to you to negotiate with the landowner as to what it is. And I don't think that the county should put a 30-meter setback if it's not required. And you're trying to make that standard right across the board. And if you have an issue of a main water source or something that needs that kind of requirement, then you can come make the case to us. But as far as that, it's... Unless you're National Energy Board, like the Trans-Canada Pipeline, I think it doesn't sit well with me. I think you're on the list to ask, just like the Trans-Canada Pipeline. That's how I feel.
Any comments?
You know, I think our letter fairly states it out just that, as staff were indicating, if there's an approach to us, it's not a 30-meter without change. It's what's being proposed and how would that impact water quality? Because that's what we have concerns about. And that's, you know, in terms of preserving. And I know that that's something that we've been interested in as well. And that's where we're coming at it from.
It's all about the notification and mitigating circumstances before they happen. What you're interested in, or...
Yes, thanks. If I can add a little additional context, I guess, the county has a setback that is in place for various reasons. And so what we're asking from the WID is that we have a setback so that we can maintain the operation of this irrigation works, which predates the county supplies water to over 400 irrigators, farmers, ranchers, municipalities within the county, commercial, you know, interests. And so what we're seeing is an encroachment as the property is subdivided and owners have the right to do that. But this infrastructure has been in place in terms, like a lot of the county roads. And so that 30-meter setback and the notification is to ensure that we can continue to deliver water for the next 100 years. Equipment gets bigger. We have to be able to get in. If someone has built their dream acreage on the part of a canal and their deck overhangs our right-of-way because we weren't notified or a development permit was issued for landlocked property because the WID has a canal, somebody can use that. We don't want to go down there. We very much value working with the county and all residents in the county. And we're just asking for the notification. The board went to a great deal of consultation with Rocky View and the County Wheatland looking at the development process and our land use policy so that it could fit together to work, continue to work in harmony with the county as we do. So understand, Councilor Booth, you may have some issues. We have a new general manager, David. We would welcome the opportunity to talk to you offline about your concerns. Thank you for the opportunity to address the council.
Thank you. Any other comments? Colton?
Through the chair, I just wanted to add, the reason we're proposing to have that in the land use bylaw is we discussed this with our legal counsel. And they noted that due to the fact that there are site suitability concerns, we do have an obligation potentially to include that in the land use bylaw. So it was discussed legally as well. Also note, it's not 30 meters arbitrarily across the board. Every develop, at every development permit, there's the opportunity for someone to contact the WID to have a relaxation of their setback. And generally, this is arbitrary, but they generally are very reasonable when the applicant speaks to them and explains the particular situation. I think they largely just appreciate the notification and involvement in that process.
Thanks, Colton. Any other questions, the comments? Brenda?
I just have a question for Colton, based upon the legal and everything else. If you're going to take, I just had a group of people sitting in here a week ago. And if you're going to take the right in the use away of my land, don't you think she should, like, don't we have to buy it? Or, you know, like, I just don't get to the fact that we just stood up and said that owners' rights and everything else, yes, they have a right-of-way to go in and do the work. But when you ask for permanent setbacks on a piece of property and you ask them not to use that for whatever reason, then I think you should be buying it.
Alice?
I have absolutely no problem with notification that a development is taking place. I think that is our responsibility to the WID to get. It's that giving them a 30-meter right-of-way. I know that's been going on here for a while. A lot of the councils didn't feel that that was necessary. And I think if they want a setback, they should, as Brenda said, come in here and request it or request it from the farmer directly. Not for us to give someone else, a third party, to go on, say, my property or anybody else's property, okay? But to give them notification, I think is a must. I agree with that.
Any other comments? Colton?
Through the chair, I would just note, there is variance, like everything in the land use bylaw. If someone, say, they held firm on that 30 meters, there is the opportunity for someone to apply for a variance. And then that puts potentially in the hands of the MPC and then the subdivision and development appeal board if that's appealed. And there is, it's never a definitive number. That's what we're recommending to have it go with, those 30 meters. And then potentially, people can apply to have it reduced with the WID. And they've shown to be very reasonable through most applications. We haven't seen it as a large challenge at our DP stage or subdivision.
Okay, please, next.
Andrew Comart. I brought this up at the last public hearing. And I think what I was looking for is more clarity on it. At first, I thought, oh, it's a 30-meter setback from the water's edge. That was kind of what I think people think it is. And there's all different levels, I guess. There's the main canals. There's the, a lot of the smaller ditches are being piped now. And then there's still the open ditches. Is it a 30-meter setback from all of those or just the main canal lines? A lot of people approach us to lay out houses and design their subdivisions for them. And we need to take this all into account. So when we're trying to come up with a building parcel, say with the county setbacks, we make sure there's enough room once we've set back from the roads and from the other property lines, that there's still a suitable building area. What I'm unsure about is if there's a small, open ditch running through the property, not a main line, is there still that 30-meter setback from that ditch? Or is it just from the large tidal boundaries? I was more looking for clarity. I'm not necessarily against the setback. We already had setbacks from the road, from the county roads. This line can still be used by the farmers. It isn't purchased by the county. So I think their setback is reasonable. It can still be used by the farmers. They just don't want anything built in that area. I'm more looking for clarity as to what we are setting back from. Is it just the main canals? Is it the piped lines going out to the individual pivots? Is it the small, open ditches that run through the yards? What are we applying this setback to? And that's mostly what I was looking for.
Okay, thanks for those comments, Andy.
So through the chair, while you're still up there, are you asking us to clarify that or are you asking WID? Because we can't clarify that. You'd have to talk to the WID about those setbacks.
I guess both. In the bylaw, it states that, I believe that... Yeah, it's asking to go into the bylaw at 100 feet. It doesn't make any reference to whether it's pipelines, the canals, the ditches. I would just like clarification within the bylaw as to what that's a setback from. Is it just the main canals? Is it the small ditch that runs through our farmyard? That's going to greatly influence how the county's developed. And it doesn't make any mention to that in the bylaw. Like I say, I'm not against the setback necessarily. I just think there needs to be way more clarification as to what it applies to.
Okay. Colton?
Through the chair, so as it's currently worded, and this was the wording we had worked on with the WID, but we can definitely clarify it further. It is for parcels adjacent to irrigation works. And then we refer to the Irrigation District Act, so as defined in the Irrigation District Act, because it specifically outlines the irrigation works. So it would be anything that is classified within that. If we want to add verbiage or wording that just specifically connects to the Irrigation District Act, that can be done with this LUB. The only challenge is if the Irrigation District Act changes, then our bylaw may not be as relevant and it would require updating as well. That's why we usually like to just refer back to the previous act. But it can, we can look at adding further clarity as well to this if it is proposed to be added to the draft LUB.
I guess, is there any problem adding additional clarity? Or I think that's all Andy's asking for.
Mr. Chairman, maybe WID can explain what works are. Because they know that act better than we do.
Did you hear that? Can the WID explain what the works are?
So irrigation district works under the act. I mean, it's mostly what you would think of, our pipelines, canals, and so on. For us, the biggest part is the notification. As has been noted by staff, we do look at a case-by-case basis. And if we're requested and it's reasonable and won't have impact to our works, we're not having any issues with accommodating. But it is important that we get the notification in all cases so we can make that assessment.
So if Andy's measuring out and looking for setbacks, a good place for him to start would maybe be a visit to your office and see what the setbacks would be required from the, whatever the, whatever his obstacle is? Okay, does that kind of answer your question, Andy? Okay, thanks. Alice?
I think the clarity needs to be that where your main pipelines are, that land is purchased and owned by WID, okay? The feeder lines going in onto the farmer's land is, now becomes a different ownership, right?
Irrigation district works versus...
Exactly. And I think that's what Andy's talking about, is your main canal is owned by you. So that right-of-way is already yours. And the farmer doesn't, is not to impact your right-of-way, but it's those feeder lines coming on to the farmer's land. And if you're going to put a house in there, what is the setback from that that you require? I think is more the question.
And that's where, you know, it's, like I said, was saying before, it's a good place to start coming to see us. And we can very easily describe where our works are. And then we can only request a setback relative to our works, not what the farmer's done for their own irrigation on site.
Okay.
Just to add a little clarity, the irrigation works does encompass all of the WID ditches. So the main canals, pipelines, secondary dishes, ditches and whatnot. And part of the challenge we face is that our business is not static. We do see irrigation acres move. They trade on the open market. So producer A wants to sell, or irrigator A wants to sell to irrigator C. And all of a sudden, there's a requirement for the delivery of water. The WID has to take that all into consideration. So it's not just the canals. And our office is right in town, right across from Tim Horton's. And we would welcome the opportunity for people to come in and get answers to questions because unfortunately, it's very difficult for us to move our infrastructure. We do our best to manage gravity, but we're a little bit at the helm of gravity unless we want to get into pumping everything. And that's likely not feasible.
May I ask a question on that? But if you need to extend your pipeline, and that is for a farmer in a different, in an area, and we've done some of this work for you over the years, we certainly didn't have any problem getting the right-of-way on the farmland to extend those canals. So I don't know what has changed now that you find that it, that is, that is a problem. If a farmer wants water, he's certainly going to make an agreement with you to get that pipe or the water to his land, right? Or he's off of that main canal. So I don't see the reasoning for some of this...
If I can, if development has occurred on a small parcel that the irrigation ditches don't follow subdivision, quarter section, section lines, anything like that, they, again, gravity dictates where they are. As we're working to realign our ditches, pipelines, canals, absolutely, we work with the area farmers. And what we often find is it's a trade. We need a little bit at the north end. We'll have a little bit of our right-of-way at the south end we don't need. Often, it changes hands with a dollar or a cup of coffee. But where the setback comes in and the notification is, is when there's a development occurring and someone builds a house too close to our works. Very difficult to get a hi-ho in to do remedial work that may be required if a development permit was issued without regard to where our works are. That's the problem. It's not the delivery of water to farmers. It's subdivision of a piece of property where the irrigation canal has been cut off. We do have a little more flexibility with pipelines. But again, we still have to maintain the right-of-way to be able to get in and do that. The last thing we want to have is a situation where development occurs where we're not able to get in to service that, whatever that looks like. That starts to degrade the relationship that we're working very hard with the county and our 400-plus irrigators to maintain. So it's really about going forward in the future. As there's more subdivision and development within the county, as they say, from a historical perspective, we predate the county. When there was, you know, a few municipalities here. So we're really looking to build this relationship, have this embedded so that we can protect this vital part of agriculture. And I did hear that today, that preserving agriculture is important. If we have a drought, there isn't anything more important than water. And that's what we deliver.
Thanks. Any other comments? Go ahead.
Hi, my name's Danny Teason. And I, you know, I don't, I think WID does a great job in this county. But I also believe that we have a 25-foot setback. If I have to build up against my neighbor's fence, I have to be 25 feet back. And I don't understand why they think that's encroaching on their, on their, on their ability to do their work. If, I don't think it should be any more for them than it should be for anybody else.
Okay. Thank you. Go ahead.
I'm not talking about irrigation. I'm talking, again, about the land bylaw.
We're going to have a break evidently. I could disqualify her from voting. I said we're having a break.